So I'll call the meeting to order. It's February 8th at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for being here tonight. Appreciate your attendance and your participation. Is there a motion regarding the agenda that was posted?
Make that motion.
Right.
Motion and a second from Mr. Coolidge and Mr. Wyman. Any changes to be made to the agenda as it was posted? If not, all in favor of adopting the agenda as it was posted, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Item two is approval of the select board minutes of January 25th. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Wyman and a second from Mr. Coolidge. Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes as they were prepared? If not, all in favor of adoption of the minutes as they were submitted, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Item three, town manager's report to Mr. Atherton, please. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. So my report for the weeks of January 25th and February 1st. The car charging stations down in the Covent Square parking lot are now active and online through ChargePoint. Per this grant, we will be offering free charging for one year. So I did just get the signs and we'll get those up as soon as weather permits. Vtrans has offered resubmission of last year's Class II Highway Structures grant. So I've reapplied for funding for the replacement of the structure known as Bridge Number Six on the Arnold District Road. So hopefully we see some action on that this year. Vtrans is also accepting Class II Highway paving grants again this year. So we were a little unclear on where that was going. I did submit an application for shim and overlay again on Arnold District Road on a approximately 1.35 miles of road, which would be north of Bridge Number Six. And it ends at the Town Line Road. So we're currently getting quotes from papers on that right now and we'll see how that ends up. I've been working with Hazard mitigation on the property buyout for 389 Newton Road. We have submitted all the paperwork so far to FEMA to proceed. We have secured the additional 25 matched to Two Rivers out of Kewee Regional Commission to make this a zero cost to landowner. Tended another meeting with Hazard mitigation. Army Corps of Engineers as the next steps and we're creating our flood loss avoidance study. We're still in the fact gathering stage. They wanted, we're trying to show the history of our flood losses and our mitigation efforts. So it's been kind of a fun project with Army Corps. They actually chose us because of all of the flood work that we've been doing for the last six years. So it's, it's been a pretty fun thing to do and we'll see what comes out of that. And that's really all I have this tonight.
Bill Moore, do you care to append a rec report or an economic development report?
I think, I mean, the ice rink is officially open. And you know, we also have some, there's been some modifications to our ability to to have sports or we moved on to phase three. So we're currently looking for a way to provide some kind of a middle season, winter season for, for youth sports. And we, for the first time, have let somebody actually use the town hall using our new COVID restrictions. One, one family, a group of four people practicing for a quinceañera that's scheduled for later on in the year. So again, this, you know, this move is, this figure that Governor Scott has done is, you know, had us respond and move toward that.
Thank you to Dave and thank you to Bill. Are there any questions for the town manager from the board? Any board members with a question for Dave or for Bill for that matter? Tim?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, Dave, about the swampland and what came out of that. Did that end up going through or did that fall through?
Well, I don't have an answer for that yet. So there, I don't think it's a done deal or dead deal yet. The, the legal counsel for Fish and Wildlife has contacted our attorney and wants to now come up with, be a little more lenient with the, the language that we want to use in the purchase and sale agreement. So I, I don't know where that's going yet. A couple of things we're trying to figure out is if not, apparently, let me back this up a bit. Apparently from day one, the nature conservancy was only sort of like a middleman for Fish and Wildlife. And we had started the question of, well, we have to file a 1061 notice and post it. Who are we selling this to? And it became kind of a question there. So it looks like nature conservancy stepped out of it and it's going to go just to Fish and Wildlife. However, that would be state owned land. So they have said they would do a payment in lieu of taxes, but we want to see if there is an expiration date on that. So that's where we're kind of at right now. It does sound like they're, so far, I don't want to speak out of turn yet, but it sounds like they're, they're okay with our, our deed language and our restrictive language. So once we hear back from them, I'll let you know.
Yeah, great. Thanks for the update. And I, one more that I'm curious about is the town hall walkway. I'm curious how that came out with the Friends of Town Hall.
Um, well, that was kind of an interesting conversation too, because I did speak to Dennis that day. And they sounded like they didn't really have all the funds, which was fine. You know, and I explained to Dennis that we weren't, it was okay that we didn't take any this year. Obviously we sold the, the DIN property, which covered the majority of it. And so through conversation, Dennis and I were chatting and decided it would be best for them to hold on to it until next year, just to see how things go and that we could possibly use those funds to do the suspended ceiling in the basement downstairs. So I think that, I think it's all right. You know, we, I don't want to put any pressure on them either. They've had a, they've had a pretty tough year too. So it worked out okay.
Yeah, that's a creative solution. Thanks for those updates.
Other questions for the town manager from the board? Or questions from the public? Anyone in the public tonight with a question for the town manager? Okay, if not, we'll move on to public comment and participation. So this is items not on the agenda. And there's always public comment in order on every agenda item, but this is particularly for items that you don't see on the agenda. So does anyone on the board have anything they would like to bring up tonight, not on the agenda? Tim Giles?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm curious and would like to start a conversation about whether we need a noise ordinance or not. And I thought that it would be good to put it on the agenda for next time for our board, but I thought I'd bring it up tonight just to kind of kick off the conversation. I, as I understand it, it sounds like the planning commission has talked about this thumb and they've started to, you know, develop some thoughts around this. And so, yeah, I'd like to see us discuss this at a board level.
So you'd like an agenda item next time?
Yes. And, and I'm curious if anybody has anything opinion on it now to kind of inform next meeting's discussion.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking of bringing this up, but then when I knew you were going to mention it for two weeks from now, I was going to wait, but knowing that I'm only on the board for a couple more weeks, I figured I might chime in. I guess I would say I'm not, not in favor of a noise ordinance as, at least as I read it in the, in the planning committee. A, I, I think it'd be exceedingly hard to enforce. And I think that trying to have a limitation on shooting of guns in, in, in the entire town of Brandon would be something that the general population wouldn't really be in favor of. And I, I just don't think that infringing on people's rights that far is something that we should be looking at, but certainly if we want to discuss it more in another time, I, 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 my, my initial feelings on it personally is that I would be opposed to it. I know an awful lot of people that shoot. I have an area in my property that's for shooting. We don't shoot there very much, but I know other neighbors of mine also shoot and hunt. Up near the, the mountain here, there's certainly a lot of hunting and the fellows that come in and pay taxes up in there, they, they come here to, to shoot on a regular basis. And I'm not sure how you enforce the, the noise on cars anymore than we could do it right now. So, I mean, I guess I would be very interested in what the chief of police feels and, and how that ordinance could be enforced. And if it can't be enforced, then I really say we shouldn't have any such thing.
Thanks, Doug. Tracy has a hand, doesn't she?
Yeah, I just would echo the same as, I guess I feel about the same as what Doug has said. I'm just going to leave it at that, but if it wants to come up for another discussion at the next meeting, I don't have an issue with that either.
Any others or any public input? Again, this is a request to discuss it as an agenda item, as the planned agenda item at the next board meeting. So that would be probably the time for a more robust discussion.
I have, just as a member of the public and not in my planning commission hat. You know, it's really tough to say. I had, I know a lot of people and this would upset them because I think it depends on who you know, right? Like I have lots of people I know in town that feel like because we have no limits on noise ordinances, even people hear, you know, AR-15s being shot downtown. And so the idea that that seems okay in such a small space is just like a bunch of shooting right in our downtown. I don't know how that contributes to livability in our community. I'm also just, you know, I think we need to be thinking about not just guns, but like, do we want a place, say somebody's just going to have electronic music playing for hours on end at any time of the day or night? Would we say that's not okay, but that shooting is okay? I just feel like we have to be thinking about sounds equally because it seems like right now we're not doing that and we're just prioritizing the needs of guns. Whereas I know the chief has had to go out and deal with lots of other noise issues and he can't do anything about it because there's no way to regulate it. It's like certain decimals. So you'd have to be out there standing with a little decibel meter. And that doesn't really, like there's cars, like there's some issues with cars driving round and round and round, making tons of noise, disrupting local businesses. And the chief can't really do anything about it because there's no way to enforce that because there's, the language is so vague. So I guess I just want that to maybe be thought about or taken into consideration, or maybe even if it does move forward, getting some people to come and have public input on this because I know it's a huge issue with a lot of people I know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, Dave, could you make a note to add that to the agenda for next time, please?
Sure. Can I, can I make one comment?
Oh, absolutely. Please.
I think one thing with the series of events that led up to this small conversation tonight was I think we need to work on this as a joint effort with Select Board, Planning Commission, Chief Raquel. And also to look at, these are touchy subjects and you're just going to start infringing on people's land rights and that's, that gets tricky. You know, we do live in Vermont and we, we aren't required to be licensed to carry a gun. So there's a lot of things you want to think about there when, when drafting this ordinance that, you know, there are some reasons people move to Vermont is because of that, so they can hunt and shoot. So I, I hope we tread lightly and cautiously with this.
And I hope I can just chime in again. I mean, I think, you know, we have a neighbor who shoots off Tannerite, which is not used for, I mean, I wouldn't use that for hunting deer personally, but, and I imagine that people are not using that to hunt deer. It's an explosive. It, it makes a humongous noise and right now the chief isn't really able to do anything about that. So, and I think like AR-15s, like I don't think people are going out with their AR-15s and shooting deer. I'm just saying, I think there can be two Vermants and I think we're only hearing one side of it right now.
Any other comments tonight? Yeah, Dave?
One other thing, not related to this, Seth, I'm sorry. Representative Jerome just texted me and said she's unable to make it to the meeting tonight. So she just wanted to let you guys know that she was thinking about it.
Very good. All right. Further public comment. Anyone on the board with another topic that does not appear on the agenda that they would like to raise? Okay, then members of the public with an item that they would like to raise that they don't see on the agenda. I see Barry Varian's hand.
Yeah, Seth, if I could for a minute, just to share with everybody, and some people may have heard already. There's new financial projections for the school district that have changed since we met last and actually since data was submitted for the annual report. Positive, but different. Due really to the state yield, that's up almost $500 from the original projection. And the effect of that increase of state yield changes the, the school districts' unified tax rate projection from a 3.03% increase to a negative 2.6% decrease. So very positive for the taxpayers. It's due, I'm told, from a, in, in unexpected or unanticipated strength of the, of the economy and then the subsequent strength of the education fund. So since that's different data, it's positive data, but different data, then we submitted for the annual report, which Tim was so, so good to get to the post office. We're going to send out a mailer to kind of describe those changes for people prior to our information meeting, which will be February 24th.
Thank you. That's pretty significant news. Appreciate that very much, Barry, and look forward to more communication. I see Bill Moore's hand, but does Butch have something to follow up on Barry's? Because his hand went up during the Barry comment. His hand is down. Bill Moore?
Thanks. I just wanted to let everyone know that there's obviously more, more funding coming out and Bernie and I are working with our contacts. Bernie Carr, Executive Director of the Chamber, are working with our contacts at VITA as well as the other financial institutions and the SBA to come up with another training webinar for, for business folks that want some more information about the second draw, the PPP and other, other funding opportunities to help with COVID. So keep that on your, on your radar.
Great. Thank you for that info for business owners to be aware of. Great. Topic to learn more about for many of them. How about Butch Shaw now? Different topic.
I have actually three topics I would like to just bring you up to date on a little bit. Dave Atherton was talking about the pilot money and we have the pilot program in the state of Vermont. That's a pretty tough one for them to guarantee. They can offer, but they can't guarantee because the pilot money is funded every year in the budget and it's, so it's, it's a pilot money's an awesome moving target. But since I've been there, we've always funded the pilot program in full to the full request. So whatever you, where that goes, Dave, I, I have no idea, but just to let you know that it's an annual appropriation made by the legislature. And, and to Barry, we have not voted, we have not voted on the yield bill yet. So your numbers could change again, depending on what happens on town meeting day. So the yield that you're seeing now is an estimated yield, but the bill came to the floor when it was sent back to the committee. For storage, basically, until such time as, as, as we get all the numbers in on the, on the town meeting votes on town meeting day. But we appreciate, I appreciate you, your, your projection of minus 2.6 and I, I'm hoping that it will hold. Really hoping that it'll hold. So thank you for that. But just, we're still in, and for all the money that's coming out of Maupeliya right now, we are in a real state of flex, of flux, because we really just don't know from day to day, day to day, how much money we have because of the incoming federal funds. Last Friday, we discovered, we just, we got another 50.6 million injected into the transportation fund. So that was a great surprise to us, a pleasant surprise. We're dealing with that this week. So that's, that's happening every single day up there right now. So, but we're working on it. And today, back to Dave on your talk about your town highway structures money, your town highway class two money. What the proposal is and the transportation company has not passed the bill yet. So this is strictly a proposal. But I'm reasonably sure that this is a very strong proposal is to make up this year in the town highway structures. As you know, last year those didn't get funded. So they're doubling money available in town highway structures for this year. Goes the same for Class II roadways. It goes the same for town highway aid and many of those programs in bridges also. Matter of fact, bridges is up, town highway bridges is up over $5 million this year. So we, we have a great deal of optimism that we're going to be able to get back on track. And we think we're there, but we haven't voted on anything yet. So, but if I were you, I'd still keep applying. Thanks, Seth.
Thanks, Butch. Yeah, Dave?
Well, Butch, that's great news. I mean, I'll apply for them all day long if we can get funding. The other thing on the, on the pilot program, you know, I might, it's not a lot of money on this, but I'm cautious because, you know, we, the town had like when the, when the state hospital closed down here, you know, that was a big part of the budget in town and then it went away. So just, just being cautious with that, but that's good to know. Thank you for that information on that.
So I, I want to thank Dave for keeping all those grant applications active and being proactive with Vtrans because it sounds like having done the work and having been on top of this will probably put us in good stead for what Butch has just explained about the additional funding that, you know, we didn't know was there, but could be very advantageous to Brandon. As we like to say, Vermont runs on volunteers and Brandon runs on volunteers plus other people's money. And we, we got to be in line for it. And I appreciate that Dave is, is in line for it, for us all the time. Further public comment, items that you don't see on the agenda tonight you'd like to raise?
Yeah, I had just one more question. So I'm trying to understand, I feel deeply, it feels deeply unfortunate that we let Margaret go. She was definitely the best ACO we've had in town. And so I'm just as an animal lover and as a, a small farm rescue. It's just really important to me that we're thinking about this and talking about animal rights and welfare in our town. Just because, you know, we just, stories keep coming out about issues with this. And so I'm trying to just, I'm trying to, I'm looking at some of our ordinances and the, and the new role. And so I'm just trying to understand will the ACO, I guess I'm just trying to understand the role of the Department of Ag pertaining to animal welfare and enforcement in our town. I'm just trying to understand what's the role because from what I understood, the ACO would be investigating some of these issues, but then that doesn't seem to be the case anymore. So I'm just trying to get a better understanding of how this has shifted since more animal welfare was included in the changes to the ACO.
So there's, there's a really significant, I'll let Dave talk to this in some more depth if he would, but there's a really significant difference between animals that are on farms and animals that are not. And the Agency of Agriculture has a very important role to play with animals who are on farms. And that become, we, we had an example in December where they were made aware of an animal neglect complaint. The, the State Agency of Agriculture, they sent an animal welfare specialist who was accompanied by the Brandon Chief of Police to make an investigation, conduct an investigation, examine the animals, examine the conditions in which they were being kept. And interviewed the owner of the animals and the determination was made by the Agency of Agriculture Animal Health Specialist that in fact, the animals were being kept according to accepted animal, animal practices, agricultural practices, and that they were in good health with adequate access to feed, water and shelter. And so in the view of the board, this is the way the procedure should work. It respected the rights of the animals. It, it took seriously the complaint by the person who lodged the complaint of animal welfare. And it respected the rights of the animal owner who was then vindicated in the fact that he in fact was taking care of his animals in a humane way. So to my thinking, that's a good example of how it should work in terms of animal welfare in Brandon.
So is a farm, like I wouldn't consider what we have a farm necessarily. There's farm animals, I did call it a farm, but there's farm animals that live here, but they're not, like we're not doing, like we just own them, take care of them, care for them. So is that, like that, I'm confused if is that how all farm animals are taken care of? Is if they're on, is it because they're farming animals or is it because they're designated as a farm by the Department of Agriculture?
The Department of Agriculture has a very useful infographic that I believe Sue Gage's daughter either had a hand in or a leadership role in developing. And that in fact is an appendix to the Brandon Animal Control Ordinance.
And you are right, Ally, that just because it's a farm animal, doesn't mean that it's considered on a farm. Now there's if somebody has an animal as a pet and they are, and they are not a farm, then it's, it's not considered a farm animal.
And under that, it would be the ACO that would take care of that animal.
Well, I, I would suggest that the ACO has a role in all of these cases, but it's just different kinds of roles. The ACO is supposed to be working in harmony with the state and Department of Agriculture when there are farm things that she notices or gets asked about. In other words, it's a, it's a, a smooth range of responses depending on where the need falls in the, in, in the range of animals in our town.
And just last question, is there, I just would be curious to know who does the regulating at the Department of Ag? Is that public knowledge or is there an entity that I can reach out to? Or a person?
I wonder if the chief has an answer for that. Do you know who that is, chief?
I deal with somebody locally who is Darrell Keown and I'd be happy to chime in on that, but I saw Mimi Brown had her hand up well before I got brought in. So she may have a question that might be pertinent to that conversation.
Thank you, chief. Mimi?
Go ahead, chief, and finish your conversation. I have a slightly different question.
Very good. So, yeah, so I deal with the, the local person who's my rep for the Agency of Agriculture, but you can go to their website to actually get the state veterinarian to chime in on where they want to weigh in and where they don't. And while the Department of Agriculture has a definition for what is, or what they consider a farm, doesn't necessarily meet the same definition that everyone else might think of as a farm. So they could, you could have people that have farm animals that don't work as a farm. And yet when the State Department of Agriculture looks at it, they will, they could consider it a farm and therefore they would have jurisdiction. And so the law requires that I, if I'm trying to take any type of enforcement action, that I have to check first with the Agency of Agriculture to see if there's an issue for them to deal with. And they look to reconcile any kind of issues before enforcement action is taken. So that's our first go-to. And I believe as Seth mentioned earlier, the role that I thought, and I think that the board was thinking for the ACO was to kind of work in harmony with complaints that an ACO receives as well as work with the Agency of Agriculture and the Police Department when there are issues to figure out who's really the best responsible party to take that complaint.
Yeah. Should we go to Mimi's question?
Dave had something.
Dave, are you doing a, yeah, I know. Dave, are you doing a follow-up to Chris's conversation?
I was.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I, I think just a couple of things that, you know, I don't know how word this, I guess, you know, we, we sometimes have employees with, that we might have some personnel issues with, you know, I think of a few through the years since I've been here that are things that we, we don't discuss in an open meeting for privacy issues for, for all parties. None of us feel like airing any dirty laundry. However, we, we haven't eliminated the animal control officer position. It's still going to go forward. We have an interim right now and I've had a couple of folks interested in it. We still have an animal control ordinance. We still plan on moving forward with working with Department of Ag and Fish and Wildlife and the Police Department. We, we all learned a lot this year, I guess. At least I did with a lot of the way this works. And At least I did with a lot of the way this works and and one thing to remember too that, you know. Statutory law allows the Select Board to sort of create what. How, what type of Animal Control Officer they want for their town, if they want it to be just the dog catcher or, you know, full blown. With a badge and ticket writing. I mean, that's all up to the Select Board and how they create this position. And, you know, w- we're not taking it lightly and um we're still going to find someone to to do this job. So. I don't, I don't know. Not the answers your questions more than, I mean, I've seen a lot of stuff in the paper and, you know. Don't feel that that it's necessary to discuss these things in an open meeting, so. But we're still going to go forward with it.
Sure, Doug, a follow up?
Yeah, yeah, just because on the same subject, um, I I think it would be very easy. To help Ally understand this a little bit if we were able to uh. Send her a copy of that uh. Form that was, you know, made that shows what the definitions of the farm, because there's different ways to define. The farm and that was her base question was. You know, what what is, what is that difference? And I think that, I think, I I don't know if Dave has it or if you have it, Seth, that you could email it to her. You know, but I think that would help help her at least with that question.
Thank you. We're ready for Mimi's question now or comment?
There you go. Um, sorry you don't see me. We're having internet connection problems at our house tonight. Um, my my question is mostly about the Animal Control Position. Um, I would like um assurance from the board. That all the work that was done in the last year. That we will continue to have a strong ordinance. And that what I was confused in reading in the papers and and I guess maybe some social media. I would like to know that our Animal Control Officer, whoever it is. Is not going to be a reactive position. I want it to be a proactive position. Just like with everything else we do in this town, we have become proactive. And ready for tomorrow. And I think if we we allow the ACO to just become reactive. We would be taking a huge step backwards. In animal welfare and I'd like to know what the board is thinking in that respect.
Thank you, Mimi. Anyone want to chime in first? I have uh expressed the position which I continue to hold. That I do not want a proactive Animal Control Officer. I want a responsive Animal Control Officer. And I believe that that's what is in the best interest of the community.
Why?
Because I believe it's all that's required, Mimi.
Well, required and necessary are two different things.
I believe it's all that's warranted. It's all that's necessary. It's all that's required. I'm not sure which adjective like will will make it. You know, ex- exactly right, but. I don't believe that there is a need for. A proactive Animal Control Officer to be making preemptive visits to owners of animals. If if he or she receives a complaint. I would like the Animal Control Officer to respond swiftly. And seriously, as I believe happened in the December case that I alluded to. But I do not want Animal Control Officers driving around town looking for problems, opening gates. Doing things like that.
So you are not concerned about animals that cannot speak for themselves when they might be in distress?
That's that's nothing close to what I said. You just put words in my mouth that have nothing close to what I said.
Well, that's what you're implying because animals need help. And I'm I'm concerned coming from working for the state police for 14 years. That a lot of human abuse starts with animal abuse and I think if we are not. Progressive in our approach to animal control, we could be allowing. People to go down a wrong path where they're going to be dealing with law enforcement down the road. The studies are there.
I wonder if I can jump in and um and and at least express my um opinion, which is a little bit of a middle ground here. I um. I I hear the com- um the concern about uh not wanting to be just reactive and and yet the concern about being overly proactive. And I would argue that my position is that the Animal Control Officer should be paying attention is what I use the word. Which means that if they observe um clear animal um welfare abuses, then they should initiate. Um, action because um just like the police, you know, they don't just wait to be called. If they observe something that's clearly a problem. They respond proactively. Now, the part where I I hear Seth, because I've been in this environment for a while, developing this Animal Control Ordinance and I have some sense of. You know, how some of the board members feel is that. I I think there is a concern that we don't want someone who's, you know, spending um. I I an overly large amount of effort um sleuthing around looking for problems. And again, I would put the analogy to the police. Um, I don't think we want the police, um, you know. Snooping around for things that they might be able to find if there's no cause. Um, it's kind of like, you know, stop and frisk, you know, you don't want police stopping people willy nilly. Because they might be able to avoid, you know, um, a crime of some kind if they got lucky. Um, I I think there's a cause involved. And so I. I I'll just leave it that I'm really looking for that legitimate middle ground where we have an Animal Control Officer. Who has a a heightened awareness of animal welfare and observes our community and pays attention.
I I would agree completely with what you just said, Tim. And and to that effect, I hope that we, when we hire a new Animal Control Officer, we get them. To the academy or whatever other training. You find be appropriate, but we need to get this certified so that they then understand that, so that they're not. Snoopy for no reason whatsoever, but they are, they're being. Productive in what they're doing in helping the animals that cannot speak for themselves. That's my biggest concern. And then to just tip off a tiny bit on this conversation to go back to what you brought up earlier, Tim, about um a noise ordinance. There's been a noise ordinance in the land use ordinance for as many years as I've been in town, which has been 30. But it's never been enforced. And I know with the Hagerty case, I was calling the chief on a regular basis. A couple of years before action was actually done because of all the barking there. And I think we need to have an enforceable noise ordinance. And I would be glad to help anybody with that because. Trust me, there's nothing worse than barking dogs going on at all hours of the day and night. And if we have no noise ordinance whatsoever. You're going to have a lot of unhappy townspeople. You can ask all the neighbors that lived around the Hagerty property how much we enjoyed not. Listening to those dogs barking at all hours and days and night. And we had nothing that could be done about it. So. I think that's the end of my conversation, but I I'm I am hopeful that we will now have um. Good actions with an Animal Control Officer. Um, Tim, I think you've got the great idea and I hope that the rest of the board. Takes good listen to what your thoughts are on this. Thank you for listening, folks.
Thank you, Mimi. Others? Others on other topics? Okay, if not, we'll go back to the agenda. We have uh number five is the Town Report and Town Meeting Discussion. It was a nice time this morning to put labels on Town Report books. And they've been brought to the post office and should be in people's mailboxes forthwith. I think the goal is that uh we might have them in by the end of this calendar week to people's houses um so that they have enough. Warning ahead of the school meeting. The town and the school are um both cooperating by publishing our reports in the same book this year. There is a. Here's a sample of what you should be looking for in your mailbox. Attractively colored photos, lots of stuff from the rec department. Thank you, Bill, for all the offerings you've been making and so forth. And a new presentation inside in terms of um. How the finances and the reports of the offices and committees are made up. For Town Meeting Discussion. I believe that the next step that we're on is that Bill Moore is going to uh help facilitate a webinar. Practice at some point, if possible. Uh, we're going to present the town meeting on March 1st. Uh, on the Zoom platform as a webinar. And I don't know, Bill, you've unmuted. Do you want to tell us a little bit more about that?
I unmuted by mistake, but I guess I can. So, yeah, I mean, the the, you know, the the access on the side of the public. Will be slightly different than the Zoom. I mean, you know, they'll be clicking through on the link. Um, they're just not going to be able to see everybody else in a gallery view, but they'll still have the ability to ask questions and to be heard. Is the only way that we could manage it, you know, with the 500 to 1,000 uh. Um, limit with the webinar. So it'll be cool. We'll practice. It'll be a lot of fun.
Bill, um, I know you usually do tech for us during these meetings, you know, you kind of let us all in and you um, you know, re rename everybody appropriately and I appreciate your help. I'm wondering if you've lined anybody up to do that for Town Meeting because you're our moderator and the last thing we're going to want you to be doing is messing with Zoom.
Yeah, we'll we'll find somebody to do that for sure and somebody that's tech savvy, like you maybe.
Well, if I wasn't presenting, that'd be a great idea.
We'll find somebody.
I mean, I would enjoy that.
The power is amazing.
No, it's not the power.
No, no, it's good. No, trust me, I'm into it too. No, oh, yeah.
So at Town Meeting on um the informational meeting on Monday, March 1st. We'll have the Select Board do a presentation webinar style about the proposed budget. And then uh Dave has arranged for the engineers who have made the proposal for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. To make a presentation regarding that, uh which is the bond vote that we're asking on March 2nd. And those are really, I believe, the only two things that are going to happen at the webinar meeting on Monday, March 1st. Presentation about the budget, presentation about the wastewater treatment plant, proposed upgrades and the bond to pay for that. And then uh the voting will be uh by Australian ballot on Monday, March 2nd, uh Tuesday, March 2nd. Other comments or anybody want to uh catch me in something, a detail that I got wrong? Okay, we'll try and uh try and put together a good slide presentation um and we will do a good webinar practice and we'll try to have a smooth experience. Uh, this webinar thing will also allow people to call in who don't have computer access or good internet access and they'll be able to listen in. Um, like a conference call would. Anything else to be said on Town Report and Town Meeting? Okay, how about an update on board vacancies? I'll ask Mr. Afferton to lead us on this.
So I have one letter of interest in the packet today for um. The Planning Commission. I did receive two others over the weekend, um. Which I can get out to you guys here. Um, I I think the plan was was to. Gather until the next Select Board meeting. Was that, am I correct on that? I think we're going to go for, we're going to post for three weeks, right?
Uh, that was my understanding. I'm seeing some heads nodding and I'm seeing a grin.
Yeah, that's the understanding.
Yeah, so um. Yeah, we've got some good applicants that have come in, so it's pretty exciting, I think. Um. And I will forward these other two along to you guys here, probably tonight or tomorrow. And um we can look at, I guess you guys want to look at doing. Well, you know what I'll do? Whatever comes in from now to the next meeting, I'll just forward them to you guys. So you've got a chance to look at them. You know, at least a week before. So I'll do it pre-packet.
That would be good. Um, there was some thought about um ahead of the next board meeting packet or maybe in the next board meeting packet. Could you perhaps give a summary sheet? Um, that says this position has interest from these people and this one from this one and so forth, so that we kind of have a. A cover sheet, so to speak, for all these letters of.
Sure.
Just thanks to everybody who is expressing interest in serving as a commissioner or board member or um. Alternate or delegate, you know, various roles that have to be filled and they're all important in different ways. And we appreciate the number of people who have responded to uh Dave's ad in the reporter and to the conversation at the previous board meeting. So thanks for that. Yes, Dave?
Just wanted to say thanks to Ally and Lindsay for posting that on their Facebook site too. That. That gets a few more views, so thank you.
Very good. If that's good, um, we're gonna. Look at those all next time. And then this this board meeting, we have a draft policy for filling vacancies to look at so that we um. Kind of have a a process in place. That appeared in the packet. So if we're ready, let's take a look at that. That's number seven. Uh, so there's, there's seven steps in it, basically. Um, you will have read it in the packet, I'm sure, when it came out. It's sort of based on our previous conversations at previous board meetings. And it's based a little bit on uh what the statute requires us to do when there's a vacancy in a town office, like the town manager or another select board member and so forth. So are there any, uh, what's what's the pleasure of the board on this? Do you want to discuss it? You want a motion? You want to send it back to drafting?
I think it looks uh, it 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 looks to fall in line with what we have discussed. Um, and I think I would uh. I would, I would be certainly in favor of adopting it. I think our prior. Uh, discussion on these new policies was that we would discuss them and we would think on them for till the next meeting. So it'd be, you know, probably more appropriate to vote. In the next one, so um. But I I I think that the uh, the the letter of what we were thinking of doing is is outlined very well in this.
Thanks, Doug. Other comments? So Doug's recommendation sounds like is to lay this over a meeting. What what's that, Brian?
I think it looks good. I agree with Doug.
Okay, great. We'll lay this over a meeting then and look to. Ratify it next time or make amendments to it. Is that some consensus? I'm not hearing any objections, seeing some nodding. Okay, we'll do that. We're gonna lay that over a meeting. Dave, could you put that on next meeting's agenda also and we will include it in the packet again, please? Thank you. Okay, number eight is the Annual Financial Plan for Highways. Uh, Dave has got this and the Road and Bridge Standards and the Certificate of Compliance and Network Inventory. Maybe you could introduce them all at the same time and we can. Do the action individually as it's required?
Love to. So these are the annual requirements that we go through usually this time of the year, sometimes right before town meeting. That enables us to apply for our class two. Highway grid and structures grants and other things. And um. So we do this annual financial plan every year that we we break down as an estimated cost of, based on our budget, on what we spend for. You know, winter maintenance versus non-winter and how much we. We estimate we're going to spend on our class one, two and three roads, um, and what tax portion of funds pays for it. So. Um, again, just another annual um thing we do to submit to the state. The Roads and Bridge Standards, I think we've seen this one a bunch of times. It's exactly what it says. Um, that we have adopted the state road and bridge standards um since August 8th of 2013. Um, we want to do that. Uh, that's how we get more funding, that they like us to build our roads the way that the state does. Um. I have the book right behind me if anyone ever cares to look at it. So um, that's the other thing we do every year. And then the Certificate of Compliance for Town Road and Bridge Standards and Network Inventory. So we we have done this in the past with. The Regional Planning Commission with doing culvert studies and we do bridge studies. I think the state was just through here. This fall, I think it was talking to him out on on Bridge 114 here. So they do their, our, our, our. Our uh class one bridge network and then with the we, if you go to V-Trans's website, you can actually go see like. What our bridge inventory is. Um, it'll tell like when they were, when it was built, what what condition it's in. It's quite a handy thing, what the what the weight loads are on it. Um, so another thing we do every year just to uh keep our good, our good rapport with V-Trans. I think that's it.
That was a great overview. Thank you, Dave. So it, it seems we do these individually though. So, um, on number eight, the annual financial plan for town highways, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second, motion for Mr. Wyman and a second for Mr. Bailey. Uh, Mr. Affleck has introduced it and explained it. Is there any discussion? There's not. All in favor of adopting the annual financial plan and signing it as indicated, say aye.
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 That was unanimous. Item nine is the town road and bridge standards.
I'll approve that.
Motion for Mr. Coolidge, second for Wyman. Any discussion on the town road and bridge standards?
I, I think, um, the one I'm looking at, this is, this is reminiscent of when we were doing more segment six stuff. And, and Dave, it just says here that, that we, the legislative body are certifying that, um, we're up to date and we do not exceed minimum requirements. And so I'm just, you know, asking you to kind of say once again on the record that to the best of your knowledge, we're meeting these standards because I certainly don't know that.
Yeah, we, we sort of have to.
Yeah.
It's, it's not one of those things we really have a lot of leeway on. Like when, when we did segment six, say we used, um, we have to use the bridges and standards that were available that year that we put the, the contract out. So we have to build roads this way. I mean, it's really, it's senseless not to.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Dave. Other questions, discussion? If not ready to vote, all in favor of adopting the town road and bridge standards statement, say aye.
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 None are opposed. That was unanimous. And item 10, the certificate of compliance for town road and bridge standards and the certification of network inventory.
Yeah, that was actually the one that I was talking about, but that's okay.
Mr. Wyman, motion approved?
On this, on this one, shouldn't we have checked, uh, the box on, in the second or, and third paragraph? Whether we do or we do not meet, shouldn't that be checked before we endorse it?
Da- Dave is, uh, having us hang on for a minute. You going to tell us something or?
So, yeah, the, the signed one actually has the boxes checked. I'm not sure why the copies don't. So the one, the signature thing does.
Okay, so they're, they're both checked, due, I assume, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
So, so a reminder tomorrow morning, we would go to the town office and sign these. And the copy that's at the town office to sign has been indicated, yes, do, do comply. So there was a motion for Mr. Wyman. Is there a second to sign? Second for Mr. Bailey or Mr. Giles. Further discussion? All in favor of signing the certification of compliance and network inventory, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. It's unanimous. The ayes have it. Item 11, consider the use of the local option tax funds for Route 7, Segment 6 matching funds. Dave, this is very exciting. So it's a lot of money.
I thought Sue was going to be here, so maybe she's watching the football again. I don't know. So, yeah, this is, uh, Sue's requesting to transfer money from the local option tax to, uh, well, fund the rest of Segment 6. So we're, we're right where we want to be and we got the money to do it.
This is a big deal. Uh, I know this is only one piece of paper and, um, there's not much written on it. But, um, this is, this is $295,109.63 that the treasurer, Sue Gage, is asking the board to transfer from the 1% tax, the local option tax that we've been squirreling away since its inception, which I believe was 2015 or something in that range. And Dave, do you want to, uh, just kind of give us the caveat of the balancing change order, um, potential?
Sure. So as far as this is, this is probably the last construction invoice we'll see for work that had been done on Segment 6. We might see a few engineering ones pop in in here. We still got to close out. Um, but as far as construction, you know, they're coming back to do the side rock repairs, but that's not on our dime. So, um, you know, we'll be, we'll be truing everything up here this spring, early summer, do a balancing change order and close the project out. And I think we're still running a little under budget. The last time I talked to Dave Conger, so, um, I mean, we did have some change orders along the way. Some were good, some were, you know, it all leveled out. But, uh, yeah, we're, we're, we're in pretty good shape right now. So this is, this is the end. Um, it's pretty exciting.
I think that, um, this is kind of a, a really important thing to point out that, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're asked, we're being asked to move this nearly $300,000 out of the local option tax fund. But in your town report, which will come to you hopefully this week, even as of June 30th, you'll be able to look there, uh, on page 42 of the town report. And even as of June 30th, that the 1% local option tax fund had $483,000 in it. So we're not going to deplete the local option tax fund. This is what we set it aside to do. But this is going to allow us to meet our grant matches for Segment 6 without going to the voters and asking the voters for an additional bond borrow or for an additional appropriation of property taxes for one year or a hike in the tax rate for more than one year. This, this is, uh, the result of a lot of foresight. And I have to say, six years ago, five years ago, uh, on the board, there, there was a lot of effort expended by the town manager and the board and the taxpayers who came together in town meeting. And our state representatives who advocated for us in the legislature, Brandon did something very unique and got itself a charter from the legislature specifically to authorize us to impose the 1% tax. It had not previously been allotted to a community like Brandon, which was, has been on the receiving side of the educational funding formula. It had previously been reserved to towns that were on the sending side of the educational funding formula. And there were, this was at the very end of a legislative session. They think that some of us who were new were nervous that it was not going to happen that session. And we were counseled to be patient and, um, it, it did in fact happen. And I think that the board and the town management have shown real restraint in not spending this fund for anything other than Segment 6 because we know what an important investment in the future of our community Segment 6 represents. So this is, um, I wasn't planning to talk at all about this, but the, the more I consider it, I mean, this is kind of an emotional thing. This is, uh, which and some of you were here in the 30 years ago range when Segment 6 was kind of popped on the drawing boards. And it has become a project that's defined really a generation of Brandon economic development. So I, I think that it's a great testimony to the community working together and to, um, the town coming up with creative ways to fund this that do not lie on regressive measures like a property tax paid, um, paid by all homeowners, but on some other measures too. Anyone else anything they want to offer? Yeah, you've been here longer than me, Doug.
Yeah, I, I think you stole most of the thunder that I wanted to say. But I did want to, uh, say you mentioned a couple of those past years. My memory, it's, this started around, uh, 2015 when you and I first talked with it, with Dave. I'm not even sure Dave had quite been named town manager yet. Might have still been on the board when we all kicked this around. And, uh, but Dave was certainly involved in it all the way. And, and you and I went and met with Jim Leary about the charter. And Butch Shaw helped us a lot. Um, and, you know, it is, it is great. It is the reason that I feel very comfortable in not running for selectmen anymore because I, I wanted this money to be set aside for Segment 6 so that we would not be going to the voters again. So I'm not political sizing this thing as I'm not running. I'm just, I'm just basically really happy that it worked out this well and that the reality is that we're still going to have, um, a, a good chunk of money in there that we can start working from there, uh, on roads. That we had really hoped that infrastructure was something that, uh, Brandon was the, uh, the spoke or the hub of the wheel. And a lot of towns come in, but they weren't helping pay for our roads or our infrastructure. And this was a way to do that. Um, so, you know, six years ago, we discussed it and it's really nice to see that that's what's, what ended up happening and that, uh, we can come out of this with still having some money left over. It's a, a great job. I am really happy and, um, really happy you were able to toe the line on this, Dave, and, and, uh, keep, um, keep the, the money, uh, situation in hand and, and have us not have to hit this money at any other time. This is going to help the town for years to come. I'm really happy we didn't have to go back and ask for another bond. So good job, everyone.
Thank you, Doug. And Dave, yeah?
So I want to go back even a little further than that because I believe that this originated from Sue Gage when we were having, even before you got, were on the board, Doug. She, um, she brought it to us and of course, you know, we had some dark times there. Um, and, you know, it was when you guys got on the board that we were able to, to move forward with it. So, yeah, I, I think Sue actually started that conversation way, way back. I mean, that was a long time ago. So glad I went through. Another thing I just want to say that it, it's kind of funny that I was thinking about a couple of days ago. Way back when I ran for select board in 2012, I remember the candidates forum at the senior center. I think Charlie Chiquila was moderating it. And Janet Monlack asked us, who, the candidates, what we thought about Segment 6. And I was like, hmm, I don't even know what it is, you know? And so the next day I was down at the town office palling through, you know, what was said to me as this little project going through the middle of town, which obviously, um, I, I didn't think I'd ever get as involved in it as I did. But I, I, I was actually going to go harass Janet about that a little while ago and say, yeah, you know, that was, that was when I needed to find out everything about Segment 6. So, um, you know, that was in 2012. So, but we're there. So it's kind of cool.
Thank you for that. It's good context, Dave. And Bernie's here, uh, from the chamber. Bernie, uh, you did yeoman's work as the public information officer for the whole duration of the construction part of the project. But also, um, I think at least through you, I'd like to, um, convey the board's thanks to all of the merchants who collected this 1% tax through a very trying time for them as individual businesses. You know, they, they were the middle man who, um, were responsible for adding this tax to what they were selling and for collecting it and remitting it to the state. And the, the merchants have just, they, they've done it without complaint. Uh, we've tried to assist them as much as we could with signage and with, you know, waiving different ordinances for certain periods of time. And, you know, um, Bill has done some huge economic development stuff, um, with the Brandon Buzz cards and things like that, um, to try to get people to remember that it is their local purchases at their local merchants that fund things that allow the town to really, it, it's not an exaggeration that this town has covered itself in glory in terms of how it has funded and built this road through the center of the town. Th- this is a, is a story that I think Brandon should be able to be proud of for, for many years to come. So what's the pleasure of the board regarding the treasurer's request to use local option tax funds to satisfy further grant match on Segment 6?
As a senior member, I would like to make the, uh, motion to approve the transfer of $295,109.63.
Doug Bailey makes a motion. Is there a second?
Seth, why don't you do that?
Oh, happy to do a second. Thank you, Tracy. Uh, for discussion, maybe Butch Shaw, Representative Shaw, something?
I do. And Seth, and congratulations to all of you. Everybody did yeoman's work on this and it was quite a project to work on. But I want you to know that I have a book in my hand that lists every single project that's going on with state money in the state of the month. Brandon, Segment 6 has been in this book prior to 2006 with a funding stream. This will be the last time we see Brandon Segment 6 in this book because there's no more money. You have all the state funds. So congratulations to you all and to the town for getting through this slog and coming out with a beautiful project. But you're going to be out of the book next edition. That's something to celebrate.
It sure is. Any other public comment tonight on this? Other contributions? Jan Coolidge, give the thumbs up. Thank you, Jan. All right, ready to vote. All in favor of making the transfer of $295,109.63 from the local options fund to use for Route 7, Segment 6 matching funds, say aye.
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 That was unanimous. There are none opposed. Excellent. Item 12, we've got a couple of warrants. What's the pleasure of the board on these?
Make a motion to approve both?
Motion for Mr. Wyman to approve the warrants. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Coolidge. Are there any questions on any of the bills? Doug Bailey?
Top of page two. Uh, the, the two, the first two bills for fencing. I'm assuming there's some offsets there, but I would love to hear about them.
Yeah, Doug, this is Bill. I'm going to miss our little conversations at the end of these meetings, FYI, for the future. But yes, the, uh, it seems like my bills always come up. So the, uh, yeah, that's, uh, part of that grant work that we received. Uh, we're getting, uh, $10,000 reimbursement from the state on that. That was, we had the 50% match, the, between the $3,000 that we raised for the dog park portion and the fencing, uh, we covered our half by spending the money on we could res servicing the tent, the court and the associated fence work. And it was, you know, once we submit this, we'll get reimbursed our $10,000 from our grant that, uh, thanks to our representatives, uh, Shaw and Jerome and the folks at the state we were able to get and finally put this to bed.
Thank you, Bill. I know you're going to miss my questions when I'm gone, right?
I really am. I really am.
Well, you know, the problem is the warrant only shows one side of things and that's all we get. So, you, you know, I know there's often the story, but we, we're, you know, we're locked out of the town office. It just made sense to hear it. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Other questions? If not ready to vote, all in favor of approving both warrants as they were presented, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None are opposed. Any abstentions? No one's abstaining? That's unanimous. So we have an executive session on the calendar, but we also have a liquor commissioners meeting. So before we pop to the liquor commissioners meeting, I know sometimes people don't stick around for that. And does anyone have any announcements they'd like to make to the community? Not at the moment. Okay, so at 8:08, we'll adjourn, not adjourn, I apologize. At 8:08, we're going to recess the select board meeting. And I'll call to order the Brandon Board of Liquor Control Commissioners. There's an agenda before you. What's the pleasure of the board on the liquor agenda?
I move you off the agenda.
Sorry.
Motion for Mr. Giles and a second for Mr. Wyman. Any changes to be made? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. I would like to, uh, Charlene, if I could disclose, uh, for the record, a business relationship with both the current owners of the Brandon Inn and with Old Mill Inn, DBA the Nezbe River. Does any board member, uh, request that I recuse from, uh, approval of these liquor licenses? No. Okay, so I've, I've disclosed that. Is there any, uh, motion regarding a consent agenda for item two, which is to approve the minutes, item three, which is to approve liquor licenses, first class, three, that are listed, second class, two, that are listed, and four, an outside consumption permit, uh, for the inn that's listed? Any objection to taking two, three, and four as a consent agenda?
I'd make, I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Wyman moves to approve two, three, and four as a consent agenda. Is there a second? Mr. Bailey, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. That's unanimous. Consent agendas are not debatable. Item five. Item five.
I'll adjourn.
Mr. Coolidge moves to adjourn.
Sorry.
Mr. Wyman seconds. Those are also not debatable. All in favor of adjourned the liquor control commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Anybody, uh, I see there's a couple of, uh, folks on the call who haven't spoken. Anybody want to speak tonight, uh, regarding that? We certainly want to thank the folks, uh, whose names I see, uh, on the call who are, uh, taking part in some furthering of a great Brandon business. And, uh, you're free to talk as much as you'd like to or not about that tonight or, uh, not at all. No takers. Okay, so, uh, the select board will come back to order at 8:11. And, uh, we do have an executive session. What's the pleasure of the board?